Wet session to order for October the ninth, 2025. We have our agenda for that. If any guests, anything that, Doc? Old business, going out to old business. Discuss regarding the correction made for clarification on the previous approved changes to Edgefield County Ordinance, Section 24 dash 252, also 24 dash 285. And we're gonna have discussion regarding them there plant approval for their proposed RV park located on Brim Oak Road, Partica ID 162, double out, double out, zero, zero, four, six, zero, zero, zero. This ordinance continues to grant to the applicant, allowing them to respond to the planning commission concerning noncompliance with county ordinance. Advocate or that representative will be prevalent for that particular, this part. But at this time, we're gonna go to the county ordinance.
I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but y'all have had a few weeks to read it. So if you have any comments, questions, concerns.
I, I had a comment when I met with Doc in April about this that, just in honoring the fact that our government is, you know, by the people, for the people. I mentioned to Doc in April, I'd like to suggest when we get to a vote, if we look at Section B, the new Section B, that we add in there a public comment period during the preliminary application process. We do have one, I know one's included for the final vote on the application, but I would like to include public comment time on the preliminary application process also.
And so that's, that's fine. This is about to be a through reading of county councils, so, and David can correct me if I'm wrong, but you'll be voting to recommend a change to the text that will then have to go straight to county council? And then in that meeting, they will have to change the text, is that correct? Yeah, so whenever you, whenever you get to this item on the agenda, you'll make a motion to recommend and then call for discussion, and then you will make a motion to amend to add a public comment period under B. And I'll just, I'll renumber them, just, you can just say, under the preliminary hearing and approval process. And then you'll vote on that amendment, and then you'll vote on the original amendment. And that, that'll cover.
And this is just your recommendation to council?
Yes, council, of course, will have the final say on whether they, on what they do with it.
Anyone, any more comments? You gotta have this thing up? I don't see, like everything's in order for them to sign on it.
Sir? Okay.
You have any, any thing up over there? Anybody? If not, we'll go to, what? There's a 285 and both, 552, both, both of these together, yeah, okay. If nothing else on that, we move to Island Beach, which is discussion regarding preliminary, preliminary plant approval for a proposed RV park located on Brim Oak. We have the applicant represented for this. You wanna come up and let us know what you?
I feel like I'm standing on top of it, kinda.
Take your name from the records.
I'm River Stillwell. I'm from Greenville, South Carolina, and I'm here for the applicant on this RV park. Mr. Chairman, I, you know, just to introduce myself a little bit, I, I don't know how I ended up doing all this zoning work, but once upon a time, I sat on the design board in the city of Greenville, and real estate lawyers don't really like to come down and stand in front of a room where they're sitting on the side of the room with their applicant, and then there's 50 people on the other side in yellow shirts and red shirts and holding signs and stuff. So somehow, that became my job. I don't, I don't know how I get into this, but there's plenty of them in South Carolina these days. So I'd do these zoning and planning and VZA hearings all over the state. Every now and again, it comes to a lawsuit, but it's not the preferred way for anybody. Any developer that calls me and says, "I want to sue the city," I say, "No, you don't." Do you wanna build something, or do you wanna get in a lawsuit? But it happens sometimes. This one, I've only been looking at for about 10 days. But I gotta tell you, the hardest thing to catch up with is I don't understand the procedure. When I got it, the first thing I saw is like, I read all the minutes where y'all had voted on it and denied preliminary approval. And at that time, Doc hadn't done his writing on saying whether the conditions are satisfied or not. And here it is, coming back through again. And to kinda like make it even more confusing, is the rules are being clarified in that first part y'all had on business A. The rules are being changed right in the middle of it. And I know there's the other thing about the RV ordinance being changed too, so I was thinking about it on the way down here, because it's a pretty long ride. It's almost like we're in the middle of the game, and like, the field goals are moving, you know, the goalposts are moving, and then the size of the field is moving at the same time. So I, you know, I've talked to a whole bunch of people. I know there's a clear idea of like, let's just get this out of the county and get it into the court. I have some sympathy for when courts see stuff like this, because I've done it enough times myself. My brother was a judge, my dad was a judge, and you go in there and you got, this is me standing in front of the judge. I don't know what just happened, Judge. We did two preliminary approvals, they changed the rules in the middle. The current rules, I think, say just what Doc said in his letter, that was like, one of the first things I read, is like, I do the preliminary approval, then it goes off for DES to look at it, for DOT to look at it, then it comes back through for final approval. That's what's so weird to me tonight, that we're doing our second preliminary approval. It's not ready for final approval. Nobody's drawing up the plans that go to DOT, that go to DES, but we're talking about all that stuff. So it's all out of order. So some of the clarifications in the ordinance are really good to make the different halves between preliminary and conditional. So, you know, one of the things I wanted to discuss is like, I'm not in a hurry to come down here again and like, get no votes. Mercifully, I wouldn't hear for the first time. So I'm not in a hurry to get the note, because I'm not in a hurry to go to the courthouse. Because when we go to the courthouse, I'm gonna go, Judge, I don't know what happened. I swear they didn't follow their own procedure, and I'm looking at this. And if I look at the code, it says, "His determination matters," instead of the planning commission. And he's gonna send it right back down here. That's, judges don't like to do the work, your work, and they don't like to do his work even more. They like to just do judging stuff and leave the planning stuff down here. So it's gonna come right back down here. So I'm looking for a solution where this doesn't go back through preliminary approval again. Maybe these rules that county council's probably gonna adopt in three weeks, get clarified of like, whose decision it actually is. Because it kinda just doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, I feel like we're running in circles with two preliminary approvals. So like I said, one, one of the things that I talked to your staff about, and your county attorney about is like, I don't know why this has to go through tonight. As far as I'm concerned, it could be tabled, or you could just hold it in abeyance after you hear it. I think you're gonna hear all the same comments you heard last time. So that part two is like, I'd really almost rather be driving back to Greenville at 6 o'clock than going through the whole thing again. And of course, that's y'all's decision, it's not, you know, that's why I understand I'd have to ask you for that discretion. But I think if it does proceed, I'm sure you'll hear all the same stuff. Pretty much, we're just gonna rely on Doc's letter. He's like, "These are the conditions, these are the ones we have to look at, and this is why they all comply." And I know I saw that letter this morning, that some of y'all may have read, some of you didn't. It was kinda surprising to me, I opened it up and it said like, "Oh, in fact, they don't comply with any single one of them." That was kinda surprising. You know, the stuff at the bottom saying the application's not complete, if there's something else that needs to be in there for a preliminary package, I would like to have heard that from Doc. And since he didn't, I think he's the guy who also says whether the package is complete or not. So what I'm saying is, I think we're conflating the front end of the process and the back end of the process. And listen, I've also been, I don't know what's with RVs, why they're so controversial. I one time owned one with a law partner of mine who was a judge, and I got involved in a fight over an RV park in Spartanburg. I don't know if that thing is built yet. I don't know why they are so controversial. But this is the perfect kinda weekend where, you know, you pile the kids in it and you go and you stay the weekend at an RV park. I don't know why that is so controversial, but it is. But that other one in Spartanburg County, if that thing is not built yet, it's because it's still sitting down at DES with Southern Environmental appealing every single permit they draw. So if it comes out of Edgefield County, it's gonna go to Columbia, and DOT is gonna do their thing, and they're not nearly as political, but they're gonna, that DES thing, they are gonna appeal every single thing about that, that you're hearing tonight. All that stuff about the water and the stream and the, you know, preserving nature and all that stuff. I, I love all that stuff. But listen, if you take the extent of what they're talking about preserving nature means in that condition, you wouldn't do any development at all. Even the new ordinance has the densities for the RV pads that this development meets. I would love to come back in here later and say, "You know what? I barely looked at the new," I wanna just confess, "I barely looked at the new ordinance that has the conditions for the RV park, you know, the new things it has to have. Ninety percent of them are got, no problem whatsoever. There are others that are a little bit difficult, like it says, you have to have somebody who lives there full time. That's kinda problematic, like that another one these guys have, there's somebody who lives a mile down the road, they're on call all the time. And I've seen that in RV parks I've stayed at. So I'd like to have a chance to work with county council and say, "Hey, some of this is okay, some of this is a little difficult." But for this one, I mean, it's got public water, it's gonna have public sewer. I think, you know, it's got the density, it's got, it's gonna have, it has a pond that's gonna be restored. Doesn't even function now, you're gonna get a pond out of it, much less compromising a pond, you're gonna create a pond. So I well understand how difficult it is. I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna get up here behind me tonight and say, like, "We really want this RV park." That's okay, that's, that's, happens to me all the time. But I don't know, if you, if y'all have any questions about doing the preliminary approval again, like, I'm open to suggestions to not have to go through that tonight, because I think the procedure is all standing sideways and nobody knows what it's supposed to be. And I'm just submitting here, like, the judge ain't gonna sort that out. He's gonna send it right back down here to figure it out.
So can I comment on the why we're here?
Yeah, go ahead.
So there was an extension granted to the applicant. That extension runs out after this meeting tonight. So if no decision is made, then it constitutes an approval under state law, which obviously, nobody wants no decision. Well, we don't want no decision.
I didn't, I didn't even know, I didn't even know that part, seriously. I didn't know that like, if nothing was made, that it would constitute an approval. If we need to enter some kinda stipulation that we'll like, accept further time or whatever, we'll certainly do that. Like, we'll waive that automatic approval, because that's not what I was trying to do. I was literally trying not to have to drive down here like, five different times, you know? Which, I'll do it, but I mean, it's, I'm just, everything in my mind, in my body begs to like, have the procedure correct.
So I have two comments on that. My first comment would be that any continuation at this point because of the disorder in the ordinance, I would prefer come between the planning commission and the applicant, instead of from me. But that the second thing is, your application is pending under the rules as they were. So changes in land development code are not retroactive. So waiting to another month to do the application, you're still following under the same rules, under a continuation. Now, if you were withdrawing your application and then reapplying it, then of course, those new rules would then apply. But I'm not sure waiting one month would have any effect on your application, since it's already pending. And I, I'm not a lawyer, so I would defer to Andrew, but I don't know if you can continue an application and then accept the new regulations in the middle of an application, that works. But I know that land development regulations are not retroactively enforceable, so waiting, basically waiting another month doesn't do anything, because you still fall under the old regulations.
And I would agree that you are still under what the regulations were when you made the application.
I, I understand that. I mean, but this, it, I don't wanna lawyer the whole thing up here, but I mean, I understand I don't wanna withdraw it, because I don't know what's on the other side. I don't know what, I don't know what county council's gonna do to the RV ordinance, and these would be y'all. And so I don't even know what's on the other side. It may be that I could start over if I knew what the new ordinance is gonna be. But sitting here today, I don't even know what the new ordinance is gonna be. I got a draft of it, but I don't know what it's gonna be. So it leaves me like, well, the last thing I wanna be is in court, in front of county council, and on my way back here. And I'm trying to avoid at least one of those happening. Frankly, I don't know what, tonight, like, let's say y'all came back and maybe I even got a couple votes tonight. If it got voted down tonight, then I got one determination from him, I got another determination from you. So I'm gonna be asking the judge, like, "Which one of these counts, under the old ordinance?" That's all I'm trying to do, is avoid that, because I don't, that's why it's being clarified. I think it's clear as it is, but it's being changed and processed, so. I don't know. I liter, I literally, this is kinda my posture with this, and that's not typical.
So you know, we have the third reading coming up in November. So you wouldn't know something after the third reading.
And, and that's what I was talking about, it like, at least I'd know that part. I, like I said, I would love to be able to say like, "Oh, we can actually comply with that." So that's the part I can't say right now, because I could just start over with a new ordinance and a new procedure. And I can't tell, standing here tonight, whether that's even an open path or not. So I don't know if y'all have any other questions, but.
That third reading is on just the ordinance regarding the procedure, not the RV ordinance.
Right.
Wasn't that just the clarification on?
It's even more complicated.
It was just a language clarification, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, remember, there's two sets of ordinances that are before council that would apply to this under pending ordinance doctrine. So y'all have recently updated all the RV park ordinances, so those are pending.
That doesn't fall within this.
It doesn't right now, because they have a current application. However, if they withdraw their application and reapply, and it gets a second reading next month,
Right.
then it would apply to them. And then there's the administrative changes, which is what we talked about just a few minutes ago. Yes, that's about to have third reading at council, and it will update and clarify things going forward, but those changes still don't apply to an existing application that's still in the land development code. And I don't think you can pick and choose, like, I'm gonna accept the update to this one and not that one, kind of thing. So to me, it would have to be, I withdraw an application and resubmit an application. Which there, they can do that if they wanna do that, but just, I guess all I'm saying is, waiting two months isn't gonna change anything, other than waiting two months. Because the same rules are gonna apply either way.
It's gonna, it's gonna change two things, first of all. It gives me the option of knowing what are the new rules, and what are the standards? Which, right now, I know the standards, because he just said that I met all the standards. What I don't know is the rules, because there's this confusion of like, why are we going back twice? Why did he say he had the determination, and now we're doing it this way? So I would say, under the current rules, it's just what Doc said originally, it's his determination for the preliminary application. The second thing is, is like, if I'm in court next month, because there was a denial here, then county council's gonna change the rules, and I'm gonna say, "That's what the rules were supposed to say the whole time." County council just changed it to say exactly what I said they said. And so, I mean, listen, like, like I said, I'm just trying to prevent from doing it again and again. I don't know where this dispute is between whether it's his decision and your decision got resolved. I, I don't understand that. And that's what leaves me just going like, "Well, the last time it came down here, I wasn't here, but Doc had not made his determination." He did in between. That's what I was looking for the whole time, because when he wrote the order, he said, "This is what we're gonna, I'm, this is what my job is." And he did his job. And to me, I'd say like, it's, that's done for the preliminary part. So I wouldn't hear when that decision was made, if we were gonna go, it was like, preliminary review and recommendation here, determination by him. And I know there's gonna be another vote tonight, apparently, but I don't know what that vote is. I, I don't get that part. It's as if they filed their appeal and they won it, and there was never an argument. All of a sudden, it became planning's decision.
So to clarify, the last meeting, it was a vote to recommend.
Okay.
To me. Tonight's vote is a vote on approval or denial, which is flat their decision. The sort of logic behind that is, if I push it forward to allow y'all to go get your engineering, to go to DOT, et cetera, et cetera, that's immediately being appealed by one party or the other, regardless of which way I go. Which then's gonna bring it right back here to hear the appeal. So this meeting sort of just streamlines that, and it gets it, here, here's a decision, and now you can take it to court, you can ask for mediation, all, whatever various legal avenues are open to you. It basically gets it out of limbo, which is where it's at right now. Now, I will defer to Andrew on, and his comments, but to my knowledge, during the actual meeting, if you wish to request a continuance of the planning commission, you may do so.
That's, that's what I was basically saying, like, it didn't come out of left field.
But the, all, all the reasons, purpose, recommendation, I'll, I'll leave that to the attorney.
As long as the applicant agrees to any extension, then you'd be talking about granting the extension, but it's up to him to apply for, ask for.
And I'll talk to my client, but like, too, I'd make that stipulation too, about like, we're not gonna deem it an approval if you don't act on it. Like, we cover that part of it. Like I said, under the, under the current code, we're just in the preliminary stage, there is no planning commission vote on preliminary approval. That's why I don't understand we're doing it. And I think that is actually the argument. So I, you know, I apologize to y'all, like, it's not, I don't mean to make this confusing, it is that confusing. I mean, I do this every day, I open codes all over the state, and this one's just got a gremlin in it. And it's, it's making a hard decision harder.
So you know, it's basically part of 24-253 that had not been changed earlier, shifted things to the planning commission, that's why they ended up with it.
Okay.
And I know that was a lot, but y'all have plenty of time to ask questions of the applicant, if you wanna ask questions. Plenty of time to discuss amongst yourselves, whatever you wanna do.
Basically, uh, you, uh, what procedure have you gone through since, you say you just got the case about a few days ago?
I think I've been looking at it for, Mr. Chairman, like, 10 or 12 days.
10, 12 days?
I'm sorry, I assumed you're the chairman.
Yes, sir, right. But, you know, I don't wanna, I wanna, you know, wanna try to, like, but what I'm saying is, your client have informed you what process he made since we was here the last time. You know, I would like to, you know.
It literally changed two or three times since, the first thing I got it and I opened up the file, I knew, I read everything y'all had voted on, and then I saw Doc's letter where he said, "This is my decision."
That's right.
So I was expecting a decision, and then there wasn't gonna be a decision. Then there was a decision. I, I just, it's changed two or three times since I picked it up, which is part of like, is what's turning me inside out. I don't know if y'all were even privy to all the like, "We're gonna do it this way versus we're gonna do it that way." But it's a moving target, and, and it makes the preparations for it extremely daunting. And.
I mean, so I just, I just wanna make one comment, so. Not, not concerning my memo to the planning commission, but the process as a whole moving forward. I, I don't understand, I mean, other than clarity in language that you may use to make a decision whether to pull your application or not pull your application, you're in limbo because you cannot apply to DOT for a traffic review. You're in limbo because you cannot apply to DES for an environmental review, because you don't have the preliminary approval from the county that requires, that they require for you to submit that review. So going with a continuance, while it may clarify county ordinances and whether you wanna pull your application or not, still does not give you what you need to submit those things to the state agencies. So that's just something you have to consider. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, whether you, you do or do not grant, you know, a continuation for however long, but I'm just saying that I'm not sure that that moves your goalpost other than it, it could clarify the ordinance on whether you wanna reapply or stay under your current application. That's all I'm saying.
And I don't, personally, I don't think it was a moving target as much as it seems. We were, we were here, we knew what was going on, and we were kept abreast all along, and we knew what was happening. I think one of the biggest problems that arose was learning that the preliminary approval, not us learning, we knew this, that the preliminary approval held, held the key to open the door. And if people don't understand that the preliminary approval is what you have to have. Now, in the beginning, we had questions, and I will, I mean, I had questions as well. And it was hard to give approval to something that you had so many people, I mean, each one of us had questions and were, you know, not on the even path there. But I think our biggest issue was that, okay, we're here now, but he still can't give us what we need until we give what he needs. We all know that, you know, we're aware. But as far as the moving target, I don't think we have one. I think we just have a suspended target. How's that?
Well, I, I think part of the confusion was our Section 24-252. When it was amended and then filed with the court as the amended ordinance, Section C still retained the planning commission as the final authority on the preliminary. And so I, I really don't understand why we're back here either, because under the filed 24-252, that was filed with the court, and that was our, our ordinance at the time of the application, it gave the planning commission final say on that preliminary. And so based on what was filed with the court, I don't know why we're here, because we, we voted unanimously under that authority to deny the application, and we stated our reasons. I think at the time, that mistake was unknown, and it exposed that clerical error of what was filed with the court. And I believe that's why Doc, or the planning department, was under the impression that they had final say. Because they thought that they had changed that wording to planning administrator. because they thought that they had changed that wording to planning administrator instead of planning commission. But we have to go by the ordinance that's in effect at time of application. And so, at time of application, 252 said planning commission had final say. And if we're gonna be consistent and stick with the RV ordinance at time of application, then we need to stick with 252 at time of application.
What you were saying is exactly what I was saying about the scrivener's error. It's like, I've seen, actually seen some drafts of where it said, and I think it was actually enacted the other way. I thought the planning commission final approval was for final application, not preliminary.
We, I, since I've been on planning commission, we've never voted on final application. We've always voted on preliminary. Then, once the developer gets all of the state agency approvals, he takes it to planning department. Doc reviews it. He says stamp of approval, it's approved. Fab goes to the department as chairman and signs off on it. But it doesn't come back, it, it hasn't come back to the planning commission for a final application vote.
So, that, that's basically part of my, part of my showing would be, there's an admitted scrivener's error. County council changed it back and so, we're held to the one in the middle. Right?
Yeah.
Which is.
That's the law, right? We have to go by what's filed.
I think, yeah, I just think he's gonna send it back. I mean, that's, it's just running in circles. I mean, this is, this is what, like I said, it's not a benefit to the applicant to say, please take this to court and get out of county square. It's horrible. And I know there's a certain, you know, you, you just get exhausted, it's the second time y'all have heard it. And I know you got like six other appeals out there. So, I don't, it's kind of funny, it's weird to me. I mean, this is South Carolina, it's generally a property-friendly state, but it's hard to build anything these days. You just get death by a thousand cuts. So, I mean, I was just trying to rationalize it a little bit and try to figure out a way forward that's just not an endless circle.
Uh, basically, I think, I don't think we, uh, I know we here the second time and sometimes it takes a second time. But, uh, sometimes, uh, it's misunderstanding, I am not really clarified. And, uh, I know we don't wanna hold up the boat, if the boat need to move on, but you, we want to make sure that we are on the right path, ascend the boat down the right path and push. So, so basically, what would have happened here, I think, is that a lot of things that need to be done can't be done because of decisions that we made. You wanna say something else?
So, just for clarity, at the last one, you voted to make a recommendation.
Right.
A recommendation and a decision are two different things. So, now that we have discovered the error in the ordinance that we're in the, in the business of correcting, yes, planning commission will have a say and, and it will be an actual vote, but you need to make the vote, not a recommendation. You see what I'm saying?
Right, I understand, right.
The wording is important there. A vote to recommend and a vote as a decision are, are two different, entirely different things.
You, you, you get that, I can, but that's, that point is that it not, it not a political game, that's how we playing. I don't believe in playing political game, but we need, we got rules and regulations. And if it take, if he need the, uh, the vote to get it cleared up, that he can go, move on with getting the proper procedure that you need to get the action done, we not gonna make that a problem. That's what I'm saying. And before, we didn't make it a problem, if we did, it wasn't intentional, but we didn't have the whole facts as far as, I can't get this application because I haven't gotten a preliminary. The preliminary procedure is not gonna send you on, it'll, it'll get you on the right track, but all the other, what come after that is not, you know, that be on our hand, it's in somebody else's hand. We, we done what we need to do and that's it. And then whenever, you know, whatever need to be done, if anybody blocking from doing it, it's not us doing it, but it's somebody else. By the way, there's a change of command, where they going through the change of command, I call it, right? Right, you see?
So, the preliminary approval allows them to move to the state.
Right, that's what we, mm-hmm. Any, any more comment? I don't have any more. Can you come up here? You know, dive for easier, in the turn, exactly. If, uh, let's see here, and then what else we got? We don't have any new business, so. We will adjourn until our regular meeting at six o'clock. At this time, we will call the Ettrick County Planning Commission meeting to order for October 9, 2025. We have our invocation from Lisa and then we will do the pledge.
Okay, let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you again for another day here. First, I come to you and ask that you be with us during this meeting. May our words be pleasing to you. Lord, I also pray that you continue to bless this county. And Lord, I thank you that we are all able to live here and reside here. Go with us the rest of this night. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
If everyone will stand and face the flag, let's do a prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just for all. I would not need an approval for, uh, not, tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, that the agenda for tonight be approved, all in favor, raise your right hand. Posers, eyes have it, so we'll go with that. They need the, a motion for approval of September 11 work session meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, right hand. I need a motion for approval of the September 11 minutes.
Make a motion to a correct.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, right hand. Minutes are approved. The guest speakers, guest speakers. Uh, report from the staff on new construction and review of approved flats, September.
For September, your plat reviews were two minor subdivisions re-exempt. And on your census report, if you notice a higher commercial, it's because Spectrum's installation of their utility cabinets. That's, it's not individual commercial units, it's those, all those cabinets that Spectrum are installing. Multi-family valuation is also a little bit higher because of the Kendall Mill apartment project. So, if y'all had explained that a little bit.
Yeah. Any comment, question? Okay, Matt, we going to our, uh, private comment period and, uh, we will, uh.
Okay, and each person who signs up to speak will be given five minutes. With the comment period lasting no more than one hour, time may not be forwarded to another speaker. This comment period is intended to hear statements from the public and will not be a question and answer session. The speaker will address the planning commission only. At the end of four minutes, she'll receive a warning and in five minutes, you'll be alerted as well. Okay.
You'll call that man.
Emily Poole.
Thank you.
This is the same thing you said earlier.
Yeah, you got it. Y'all need more? Y'all got it? Okay, great.
I don't need one.
The path only way on me, wasn't it?
Y'all have enough copies?
I've already got it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
Here, we've got another one.
Oh, all right. Good evening. My name is Emily Poole and I'm a staff attorney at the South Carolina Environmental Law Project. Scalp is a nonprofit, public interest law firm and our mission is to use legal expertise to protect land, water, and communities in South Carolina. I am here tonight representing Horse Creek Nature Preserve and the Savannah River Keeper, two public interest, nonprofit organizations serving Edgefield County that seek to protect and preserve the extraordinary natural environment and watershed that their members call home. My clients and I are here to strongly oppose Blackston Custom Homes preliminary land development application for an RV park at the corner of Edgefield Road and Brim Oak Road and to implore each of you to uphold your earlier decision from July 10th and issue another denial of this dangerous development project. Earlier today, I submitted a detailed letter to each of you and I also just handed you print copies of it, listing forty different ways that this proposed RV park violates Edgefield County's Code of Ordinances and Comprehensive Plan. I've altered my statement a bit, so I hope that you've had time to read that, because I wanna be able to respond to some of the things I heard at the work session. But of course, you all are well aware of many of these deficiencies with the RV park, for they form the basis of your denial of the land development application in July. Ms. Walsh, you cited ordinance 24-79, expressing concern that the site would not be developed in a manner that preserves natural features and landscape and you expressed concerns about the maximum imperious surface ratio and maximum density. Mr. Doolittle, who's not here tonight, also expressed concerns under 24-79 with the fifteen acre maximum. This is a seventeen acre parcel. Chairman Burt, you expressed concerns about environmental runoff, contamination, and pollution that are still not addressed by Blackston Custom Homes. Ms. Whitaker, you explained that the proposal did not include an access plan, measures for the steep topography, nor any measures taking into account the network of underground streams and ponds on the parcel. You also emphasized that this project was not compatible with the area's residential character and longstanding neighborhoods and that it raised significant questions about long-term planning, site suitability, and alignment with community interests, all concerns that are contemplated under Edgefield's ordinances and comprehensive plan. Ms. Butler, you adopted Ms. Whitaker's thoughtful comments and decision in full. Ms. Haddon, you expressed doubt that the RV park proposal would meet the standards of other agencies that must sign off. Much of the missing information from this application would help us have a better idea of whether that will occur. You also stressed that this project was not in the community's best interest and would harm the properties of adjacent landowners, including the residential character of the neighborhood. All of these reasons were carefully and precisely articulated by each of you in July and they still apply in full force tonight. To change your decision would be arbitrary, unreasonable, and an abuse of discretion. Edgefield County's ordinances and comprehensive plan are clear. This RV park project is not appropriate for this site and the application must be denied. So, I now want to respond to some of the things I heard at the work session and remind you that the purpose of a preliminary approval is, in fact, to determine whether it is compliant with your ordinances and comprehensive plan. What we've seen is not compliant with Edgefield County's ordinances and comprehensive plan. This is your vote, this is the only vote you will get and it is with, it is about the ordinances and comprehensive plan, which, as you can see, there are so many reasons to deny. Thank you. July was also not a recommendation. I think that is some, that's a bit of revisionist history. If you look at your June 12th agenda, it clearly said that it was a final discussion and vote on RV park. On July 10th, Chairman Burt, right before the vote, he said this is a vote on preliminary approval. And even the July 13th memo that is exhibit four in my letter, that's written by the planning department, says it was a unanimous vote to deny the RV park. None of those tell us that this was a recommendation. It was a vote. So, I still, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Walsh and not understanding why we're here. I also wanna speak to Doc's letter, because I was told by the county attorney that Doc would not be making a recommendation. So, it is very confusing to me, as a representative of my clients, to have this piece of information going around that this attorney is saying he's relying on when we did not get a copy and we were explicitly told that there would not be a recommendation. Thank you.
Jason Cobb.
Good evening, Chairman Burt and members of the planning commission. I respectfully submit this statement to request that the planning commission require Blackston Custom Homes LLC and its proposed development of Blackston RV Park on Brim Oak Road to comply with South Carolina state law definitions of vehicle when applying the density and land use standards under Edgefield County ordinance 24-79. This states that a vehicle means every device in, upon, or by which a person or property is or may be transported or drawn upon a highway, except devices moved by human power or used exclusively upon stationary rails or tracks. This differs from the EC's attorneys' interpretation of the word vehicle at previous meetings as meaning the recreational vehicle only and stated that vehicle does not pertain to trucks or cars. However, local ordinances must yield to state law when there is a conflict. Therefore, Edgefield County may not alter the meaning or use of the term vehicle in local ordinances per South Carolina's Home Rule Act, South Carolina Code 4-9-25. If the proposed park is occupied at a maximum capacity, seventy RV lots and a hundred and forty vehicles, and, and conservatively, each lot only has one RV and one motor vehicle, that still brings it to a hundred and forty vehicles on fifteen acres equals nine point three vehicles per acre. However, the ECRV park ordinance limits the number of vehicles per seven. The maximum number of RV lots on fifteen acres then would be fifty-two point five. If Edgefield County were to approve a land development based on local interpretation of vehicle that contradicts or broadens state statutory definitions, the approval, the approval will be subject to legal challenge and potential invalidation. In short, the county cannot adopt a definition that conflicts with one the state has already established nor can it ignore the definition to achieve a higher density of RVs. I respectfully request that the planning commission require Blackston Custom Homes to withdraw their application and resubmit their application with the corrected density and plans for no more than fifty-two RV pads to formally adopt the state definition of a vehicle for all density and land use calculations under 24-79 of the county land management ordinance. Condition any approval on full compliance with state law and required documentation showing that each proposed recreational vehicle confirms, conforms to the DMV's registration and classification requirements and to also direct the county planning staff to amend 24-79 to explicitly cross-reference state definitions to ensure future consistency and legal defensibility. By requiring compliance with South Carolina's legal definition of vehicle, the planning commission will uphold both state law and integrity of Edgefield County's land management ordinance. It will also prevent an excessive and unlawful density of RV pads that the current misrepresentation of 24-79 would otherwise allow. I respectfully urge the commission to deny Blackston Homes' application and advise them to resubmit. With my two remaining minutes, my personal take on this is that my family lived in North Augusta in a high-density populated area between traffic and everything else building there. I moved to Brim Oak Road twenty years ago to have a bigger house and land that I could raise my three boys on to hunt and fish, ride ATVs, and do the things out in the country that the city didn't allow. This proposed RV park will be right in front of my house, across the street. Seventy luxury RVs have a capacity to house five to six occupants, meaning there's a physical possibility to have over four hundred people living across the street at any given time. There's also a possibility to have hundreds of vehicles in addition to the RV and tow vehicles on site, all coming and going all hours of day and night across from my, from my house. The amount of vehicle, golf carts, traffic, pets, lights, noise, other activities that this will introduce to the neighborhood will destroy our way of life and solitude that we've worked for and moved here for the first place. Our concerns are that the traffic, crime, trash, noise, and pollution problem to our neighborhood Our concerns are that the traffic, crime, trash, noise, and pollution problem to our neighborhood, it will reduce the value of our homes. There's no way for anyone to promise that it won't be detrimental when there is a possibility that it could, to say that this many vehicles will not congest our roads and intersections, that there will be no additional risk to our safety from bad actors or traffic accidents, and that there will be no pollution and environmental damage to our waterways, ponds, and wells for automotive septic spills, and to say that it will be nearly invisible from the road and nobody will be affected in a negative way from this, to me is humorous and condescending to the residents of Brim Oak. I understand business is business, but I do not agree when Blackstone's profit will be made at our expense and sacrifice. Find a field and build it there, not in our neighborhood. And in closing, I'm sorry for the inconvenience of having to drive for handling this, but it's going to be a permanent fixture in my front yard, so I have no sympathy. Thank you.
Randy Datter.
Good evening, Planning Commission, my name is Randy Dietrichson. I'm the president of Horse Creek Nature Reserve. I'm here to urge you for denial of the Blackstone RV park application due to the grave risk it poses to water quality, dam safety, and public health. The proposed site is on an eighty-foot slope directly draining into a lacaw pond and putting the associated ninety-foot dam that is registered with SCDSS. The Horse Creek Nature Reserve would support seven neighborhoods and critical natural systems, Horse Creek Water Basin, Langley Pond, and ultimately the Savannah River Basin. Hydrologic risks and environmental dangers. This site contains a perennial stream underground that flows year-round, documented by the residents, and visible even during droughts if this RV park is built. RV black water, leakage, surface, or underground system failure, or lack of power to the pumps will contain E. coli, formaldehyde, calcium nitrate, and naphthalene could contaminate drinking wells and livestock water. Impervious surfaces and poor soil on steep terrain will increase runoff, erosion, sedimentation, and threatening the core band integrity. Mass grading could reduce lacaw pond surface and trigger dam overspill failure, greatly risking all the downstream disaster, again, or dam is over ninety feet high. Historical warning, EPA 303, which is attached to my handout. This is not hypothetical. In 1998, the Horse Creek was listed as an EPA 303 impaired water body due to septic and sewer contamination. It took over a decade and millions in taxpayer dollars to clean it. The proposed development has potential to repeat similar pollution conditions that caused this disaster untreated wastewater and runoff into the same watershed. Denial now can prevent this repeating, this ecological and financial catastrophe. The property is not the right place for an RV park. Legal and ordinance violations. This proposal violates SCDSS water quality laws disturbing a perennial stream, and there is simply no way around it with the mass grading that will be necessary. Edgefield County Ordinance 2429 designed to protect environment quality along with major corridors like US 25. Also contradicts your Comprehensive Plan 2020 requires limiting development in sensitive areas, calls for preserving dam integrity and natural drainage, emphasizes historical site preservation like Horse Creek. This development is environmentally negligent, potentially unlawful, and inconsistent with county values and Comprehensive Plan harmony. I respectfully request full denial of the Blackstone RV park application. If not denied, require a ten million dollar performance bond to cover future environmental and structural damages to Edgefield, Aiken County, and Savannah River. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Barry. Barry.
Is that your email? Is that your email? I've got it right here.
Thank you, Chair and Councilmembers. I'll be reading a summary of the statement that I emailed to you. I'm here to request the Planning Commission deny the Blackstone RV park application because it violates Edgefield's Comprehensive Plan and several county ordinances and state and federal laws designed to protect the environment and sensitive wildlife habitat. First, under the South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Plan Enabling Act, every county and land use decision must align with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Edgefield County's Comprehensive Plan clearly requires developments to recognize and mitigate impacts to sensitive natural resources, limit development in fragile or flood-prone areas, and protect natural habitats and open spaces from incompatible uses. The parcel proposed for this RV park lies in a quiet, low-density residential and rural neighborhood. The plan directs that growth be channeled to suitable areas while preserving agricultural, rural, and natural lands. This project does the opposite. Secondly, several sections of the county ordinances set clear environmental and design standards that this project does not meet. Section 1856 requires certification erosion, certified erosion, sediment control, and stormwater management plans. Section 1857 mandates the land must have suitable drainage, soil, and vegetation retained to prevent runoff and erosion. Section 2479 limits RV parks to fifteen acres and requires preservation of natural features. Section 24165 requires developments avoid sensitive areas, prevent flooding, and minimize impacts such as drainage, noise, and traffic on neighboring properties. The Blackstone proposal fails to demonstrate compliance with all of these requirements. Its location and design would replace vegetation with impervious surfaces, alter drainage patterns, and increase runoff into nearby ponds, streams, and wetlands. Thirdly, this area of the Savannah River Basin supports multiple federally and state-listed species-sensitive and sensitive riparian habitats. Under the Federal Endangered Species Act, Section 7, any project that could affect protected species or critical habitats requires consultation with the US Fish and Wildlife Service. This process begins with an IPAC official species list and may include a biological assessment. Similarly, South Carolina Department of Natural Resources requires a natural heritage program review to identify any rare or endangered species or critical habitats on the property. None of these steps have been completed for this project. Without them, neither the developer nor the county can know whether approving this park would violate federal or state environmental regulations. Fourth, this site drains towards Horse Creek, Langley Pond, and the Savannah River, all of which are critical to local water quality and wildlife. Increased runoff or pollution will degrade these resources and affect both neighboring properties and downstream communities and environments. The Planning Commission has already recognized these risks when it denied the application on July 10th. Those environmental concerns remain unresolved today. Therefore, I respectfully request that before any further consideration, the Commission require the applicant to obtain an updated US FWS IPAC species list and complete any required consultation, and submit an SCDNR natural heritage review, conduct biological surveys for protected species, and provide compliant stormwater management and mitigation plans. Until those studies are completed and verified, approval would be premature and contrary to county, state, and federal obligations to protect sensitive natural areas. Approving this development will undermine Edgefield County's own land use plan and its responsibility to safeguard our shared environment. I urge you to stand by your prior decision and deny this application. And I just want to say, between my husband and myself, we have seventy-nine years of service in DOD. We saved our money and found the place where we wanted to live until we died. We found a beautiful home with a beautiful forest and pond. It's got all kinds of animals, and we have a six-acre pond that will be destroyed before the first RV even rolls onto the lot. Just the fact that they will have to do massive grading, all of that runs from that perennial spring under Brim Oak Road through the culvert and directly into our pond. So our deep, six-acre pond will become shallower and shallower with the sedimentation, and we'll have to get rid of it. Will Brandon.
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Will Branton. I'm a resident of Brim Oak Road, a voter, and a proud Navy veteran. I'm here tonight to make a statement about my opposition to this park. I emailed you all this morning, I hope you had a chance to look at it. I'm not going to go over it every word. All right. US Highway 25 and Brim Oak Road, the intersection. Highway 25 is on a steep five percent grade. Immediately north intersection, creating a significant traffic hazard for heavy vehicles, recreational vehicles, and passenger cars entering or exiting the proposed development, as well as highway traffic through the intersection. In addition to the downhill grade, northbound Highway 25, site distance is also limited by the hill that Jackie's produce. You can't see the intersection until you come over the hill. All right. This limited site distance reduces the time and distance available for northbound traffic to maneuver this intersection. Large percentage of traffic on Highway 25 is also large trucks, which require more distance and time to stop. Okay? So, based on the above, in my opinion, the traffic from this proposed development is a significant safety hazard to the neighborhood and through traffic on Highway 25. All right, legal and ordinance space for denial or deferral. Edgefield County Land Management Ordinance, overlay district regulations, and comprehensive plan all provide the Commission with both the authority and duty to ensure that development projects do not endanger the public through unsafe roadway design or access. Okay, so the code of ordinances, driveways shall be located where there is no sharp horizontal curves, steep vertical grades, or provisions of the arms manual regarding points of access are met. Due to the small size of Brim Oak Road, short distance between where the proposed driveway is going to be and the intersectional Highway 25, this effectively turns the head of Brim Oak Road into the driveway for this RV park. Okay? Every bit of traffic from this RV park is going to go through that first three, four hundred feet of Brim Oak Road. Okay? Additionally, the grade of Brim Oak Road where the proposed driveway will be placed is significant presenting a hazard for vehicles immediately needing to slow down after exiting the highway. All right, so these are safety issues. Okay, without such proof that this is going to be safe, I believe the application should be denied. Okay? Changes to existing driveways. County Council may review traffic and reserve the right to consolidate or revise any driveways or access points which exhibit inordinate traffic safety. This location qualifies as an inordinate traffic problem. Okay? Commission therefore has both the right and responsibility to withhold approval. Okay, highway overlay district. The purpose states to protect the residents, enhance developments, and improve traffic flow on primary highway corridors of Edgefield County. This proposed development will directly increase turning conflicts, heavy vehicle movements, and potential site distance failures in this corridor. All right, from the highway overlay district as well, driveway standards. No driveway serving multifamily use shall be permitted through a single-family area. Okay, like I said before, you're turning the head of Brim Oak Road into the driveway for this RV park, which is through a single-family residence area. Okay? From code of ordinances, the purpose of promoting, code of ordinances, the purpose is to promote public health, safety, morals, convenience, order, appearance, prosperity, and general welfare. Okay? This proposed project introduces substantial demonstrable public safety hazards on major highway and the intersections thereof. All right. Consistent with Edgefield County Comprehensive Plan. Okay, Comprehensive Plan says to encourage land development patterns that minimize traffic conflicts, preserve highway safety, coordinate with SCDOT to ensure safe access management, ensure new development does not overburden existing infrastructure or compromise safety. Brim Oak is a small, two-lane road. There's going to be a lot of heavy traffic on the head of Brim Oak Road, and that road is not going to hold up to all this traffic. So I believe this is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan. So requested actions is to deny this application, which is within your power. All right.
Mary Johnson.
My name is Mary Johnson, I live on Sable Lane. I emailed this to you previously, so I again am not going to summarize to save a little bit of time and not bore everybody to death, but my family moved out here in 2004. We intentionally, like our neighbor Jason said, we left North Augusta, which was a high-density area with a lot of crime, wanting to raise our boys in the country. We initially, intentionally moved to the area that was rural and remote, and we had a sand well that we enjoyed for many years. In 2012, it went dry, right about the time that they started developing Sable Lane. We had to put in a three hundred and twenty-six-foot rock well with the most horrible water I've ever incurred, it's absolutely terrible. We went without running water for three months to scrape together every penny we could to install that rock well at the time. Even to this day, we still cannot wash our vehicles with our running water, even with the filtration system on our house. So we take this water very personally, anything that could happen to our water table. Our neighbors have fifty and sixty-foot sand wells. We are all downhill from the ponds at the top of Brim Oak Road. So while I don't live on Brim Oak Road, this directly could impact me and my family. We fought several years ago against a development coming into our area with mass housing. It sits at the corner of Nicholson and Fish Farm Road, which is the other end of Sable Lane. This is our main entrance in and out of our dirt road. Even though the initial proposal was denied, it has since been approved. Promises were made like road improvements will happen. They have not. In fact, our dirt road on Sable Lane continues to deteriorate with no long-term solutions. We heard things like the state will ensure it's safe for the environment, or DOT will make sure the traffic is safe. None of that has held true to date. Sounds very familiar to exactly what we are being told now. Further, even our paved road in the areas are breaking down. This RV development sits at the corner of our other major exit in and out of our area, and we are downhill from the ponds that will be affected by this. We have loved our royal way of life that is now being threatened once again. Our boys, who are now men, want to raise their families in our area, but sadly, it is not the community that they grew up in. We have endured higher taxes because of, quote, "lower population rates", lack of adequate emergency services, poor road conditions, lack of infrastructure for years, all for the sake of protecting our royal community. And now, once again, we are at jeopardy of taking another hit. I beg you on behalf of my family and neighbors to stand up and say no. This can be simply done by following the ordinances you already have in place. And why would you approve a preliminary ordinance or preliminary application that already clearly violates multiple county and state ordinances that you already have as law? Isn't that a waste of the developers' time and money, and ours, and your efforts and resources? resources? I respectfully ask that the Edgefield County Commission delay or deny Blackstone RV land development application process proposed for US Brim Oak Road. This location falls on a protected water basin called Horse Creek. You've already heard about that tonight. Along with that, there is immense chance for runoff. They're going to clear out that entire field and run off into the ponds, and what happens to the pond water that runs into the spring water that runs into my well? We've already seen this happen to our neighbors with their ponds with the Generac development. Everything that you approve in this planning commission and Doc, as the planning administrator, there's a cause and effect. There's a way to do development without it causing environmental harm. There's a way to be strategic and cautious and safe and protect your citizens. You are our local voice. You are our local voice. The state is not my local voice. You are our protection. I urge you to deny this. Why even go any further and waste anybody's time? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Counsel, thank you very much for sharing our perspectives. I want to thank Hart Clark, who clarified this process. I found this process confusing, but I think I understand it now. So thank you for clarifying it. As I understand it, under the current system, this is the vote tonight. This won't come back to you for another vote. Right? Under the new system, you all would vote, could vote again. But as I've just clarified with him, there won't be another vote on this, as I understand it. So I urge you to be the voice of our community and vote no. But you all need a reason. Right? And I just want to zoom in on one thing here. The project shall be in harmony with its physical surroundings and in such a manner as to ensure land use compatibility. Now, if you all vote for this, you're looking all of us in the eye, and you're saying to us that you believe that this project is in harmony with its physical surroundings and in such a manner to ensure land use compatibility. I think if you go out there and you know the neighborhood, that's not true. That's why we're all here. So now, if you all decide that you think this is in harmony with the neighborhood, that's your opinion, and I think that will be held up in court. Because this is subjective. This is a subjective part of the ordinance. Many parts of the ordinance are objective. This is subjective. And if you all tell us that you think it's in harmony, I think that will be held up. However, if you agree with all of your community members that it is not in harmony with its physical surroundings, that's your opinion. I believe that's the correct opinion, and I believe that will also held up in court. Because you have the right to have a subjective opinion as to what the ordinance says. And the ordinance says, "The project shall be in harmony with its physical surroundings and in such a manner as to ensure land use compatibility." I'm not against RV parks. I think Edgefield probably needs an RV park. I don't think it needs an RV park in this location. So I think if the developer bought a proper piece of property somewhere in Edgefield County where that was in harmony with its physical surroundings, then I don't think they'd have a problem. I don't think the community would have a problem with it. So we're not against RV parks. We're against a temporary RV park which is not in harmony with its physical surroundings in such a manner as to ensure land use compatibility. And as this is your vote tonight, I ask you, as an Edgefield County resident, to vote no on this. Thank you.
I don't have anything prepared, but I have some notes. My name is Krista Branton. I live at 110 Brim Oak Road. My family and I have moved here from, I suppose, the Navy. We've lived in multiple states, but we lived in Evans for a little while when we first moved to Georgia, and we wanted to raise our children in the country, so we moved to Brim Oak. We have nice seven acres. We're off from the road. We don't see anybody. We share the large pond that's part of Horse Creek, right before it goes back to Windy Ridge. I can speak to erosion myself, because our driveway has been damaged from logging trucks probably about twenty years ago, and it's never been the same. We have some heavy rains. It turns into canyons. I drive past the proposed RV site park on my way out of town or out of the neighborhood all the time, and I look at it, and I say, "How can you put an RV park there?" I have nothing against RV parks. We've stayed in them, but this is not a good location for it. I know the land slopes. There are streams. There's trees. And to grade that, to put all those RV plots and lots and things, it's not going to... I don't see how erosion is not going to become a problem. I would not personally have to see the RV park, but my neighbors, at the beginning of Brim Oak, would, and I hate that for them, that it could go in there, and that would be what they have to look at every day. I've been told, "Oh, it's going to be a nice park." They want it in their neighborhood. The developer thinks that would be a great idea, but would he put it in Mount Vintage? Would he put it in his neighborhood, and his neighbors would not really have a problem with it being next door to them? I'm concerned about the environmental impact of the septic issue, because that many RV septic tanks with the chemicals that are in RVs, and that's like seventy RVs, that's three times as many residents on Brim Oak. I don't know how the heavy rains that we get that have flooded our ponds would not eventually flood the land there and cause all those chemicals to just wash downstream. They could go to the ponds, or they could just go into the wells. And I don't think it's a win. It's an if, or an if, it's a win. I don't think it would take very long. I think it depends on the drainage there, but when we have, you know, flooding rains like we've had, it wouldn't take much. At least twice in the last six years, our pond has flooded so much that I've had a rushing river go through the woods behind my property. That's a concern. It can happen again, because I know that it does. The issues of the ordinances, I feel like they're trying to take y'all's control away with the changes, because I feel like you guys are the ones that really are our voice at looking at what's needed in the community. I'm not against development, but I do feel like there's a lot of people in the community that really want to keep it rural, and there's areas for high development, and there's not areas for it. And this is not a development that's for the community. This is for the developer. These are temporary workers. They're not going to stay. They're not here to put people in school. They're here just temporarily, and we don't know who's going to vet them as whether or not they're good people or not-so-good people, and who's going to be managing the sites, and whether or not they have leakages, and things like that. And I have nothing wrong with RV parks. In a flat area that's not in the beginning of a neighborhood, where people enjoy their peace and quiet, the traffic is definitely an issue, and if people decide they don't want to go out 25, they could go the back way through Brim Oak, speed along those roads where we already have people drive too fast, go back through Windy Ridge and the dirt road, and we could have more traffic both directions. And this whole situation has helped us become more familiar with our neighbors, and that's a good thing, and learning more about our private, our county government, but it's also caused us to have a lot more distrust of our local authorities and our local government, feeling like there's some people that are just making more decisions that they need to be making, and having more hats that they need to have, and not listening to the citizens and the ordinances, but listening to the developers and what's going to make the most money for the developers, and not what the citizens and the community really feel is best. And that this in general is just not beneficial. I don't think it's a good location. That's all I have to say. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya.
This is Savannah Riverkeeper. I sent you guys a letter, so I don't know if I need to take the time to hand it... You got it. Okay, good. Just a couple of things, please, briefly. Number one, Savannah Riverkeeper, we operate in a 10,000-square-mile basin. I have over forty-five counties. I've been in seven of those this week alone, maybe eight, talking to county councils. And I want to first and foremost say that I am really worried about the dynamic that I see in this room. I'm really worried about the democratic process and the fact that it seems like you guys are having your vote taken away, and that seems like a very dangerous avenue to go down. You are... It is a... Taxation with representation is important. I think that you might need to consider talking to external legal advice about some of the choices that you're thinking about making. You have one vote in this process. You're talking about signing that vote away. I've heard it very aggressively be trying to take it away from you, and I've heard you be dismissed. I really just don't like the tone or the language of this room. I don't see it anywhere else. I see counties where the staff is respectful of the people sitting in this seat, not the other way around. So I would encourage you to implore that dynamic if possible. I think this is a spot zoning, which is clearly illegal in South Carolina. Yes, there was a commercial rezoning of the land that was done, but there still is analysis and process that has to go into the individual rezoning. Right now, it is not in compliance with the rest of that neighborhood, and if you have spot zoning, that is clearly illegal, and you'll end up in court for it. The other thing that I wanted to say is that I heard the attorney this morning, or today, start with, "I didn't want to come down here, and we're just going to end up in court if you guys don't make the right decision." Unfortunately, you're going to end up in court regardless at this point, honestly, no matter what decision, because we feel pretty strongly that this is a very bad location. I don't think you guys... I don't think you forgot what happened in Texas, but for us, it became very real of making sure that RV parks located on the side of huge slopes with five high-hazard dams below them... High hazard means loss of life if they bust. Have to be done correctly. A ninety-foot slope on seventy-five RVs, where I have pond after pond after pond after pond that would kill people if it went out, and then on the plans, there's not a single recognition of the streams that exist. I hear we're going to put a pond back together. Now, that's a stormwater pond. It doesn't exist on-site right now, and there's clearly three springheads that are not being identified and told to you. That is leaving you at risk. The other thing is you can put conditions if you choose to, on moving forward. I would think you would at least want to require a court of engineers, wetlands delineation. Honestly, with that should come a look at the bat population, the trees on the site. There are wetlands. There is waterways on that site. There needs to be a historical analysis. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be done. I'm a little bit confused how you denied, and then there was a preliminary with the idea that you... Or, excuse me, there was an opportunity to provide more information back to you, and here we are ninety days later. There's not a bit more information back to you, but we're looking at the decision again. Maybe I'm missing that there has been more information than I've seen. The very last thing that I'm worried about, there's a huge slope and sand wells. If you've got people with fifty-to-seventy-five-foot wells, that's surface wells. That's not wells in the ground. That means what happens upstream is going to get into their wells. That is a risk. That is a human health risk. I really think you need to ask them to withdraw this permit, to get your ordinances in line, to make sure that you please don't give your power away, and to move forward in a way that really meets the obligation. I did hear that they meet all of the criteria for the new ordinance, but it's very clearly an eleven-foot slope, which is not something that's in the ordinance is being considered. Thank you for your time.
Oak Road. I submit to you today as a downstream pond owner, whose land and water resources lie directly in the path of runoff, drainage, future contamination from the proposed Blackstone RV park on Brim Oak Road. I respectfully request your careful scrutiny and ultimate denial of this project, because it fails to comply with other ordinance, conflict with the adopted Comprehensive Plan, and violates state law requirements that land use decisions be consistent with the The Blackstone RV park proposes a serious contamination and hydrologic risk to my downstream pond and property. It directly conflicts with the adopted Comprehensive Plan objectives for rural protection, water quality, and growth management. State law, SC Title VI, Chapter 29, mandates consistency between land use decision and the plan, and prohibits arbitrary deviation without explanation and remedy. I respectfully urge the Planning Commission to conclude that the Blackstone RV park project is not consistent with Edgefield County ordinance and the County Comprehensive Plan, is not harmonious with our Brim Oak seven secluded neighborhoods. Therefore, I strongly recommend denial of this application. I have lived in Edgefield County since I was twelve years old. I love this county. I received my basic education in Edgefield County. I have invested over a half-million dollars in my Brim Oak property. It's a shame if the county ordinance and state laws would not allow me to protect my investment. Thank you very much.
That will conclude our public comment period. We thank all of you for your comments. We've taken information. We're going to move on to our business for tonight. Did you have any comments after?
I'll comment after you have the first section.
First section, okay. I know we're old business. Old business, we vote to recommend and discussion regarding the correction made for classification on the previous approved changes to Edgefield County ordinance, Section 24-252 and 24-285.
Second.
Your motion is second on the recommending on this correction for classification in the discussion. In the discussion.
I'd like to make a recommendation, a motion to include the language in Section B1, to edit what's in red on our paper. Upon submission of initial application to the Planning Administrator, the Administrator shall schedule a preliminary hearing and add the language, including public hearing, for the Planning Commission. If you don't think they have, you can vote with contingencies, or if you don't think they've met anything, you can vote against it. Do what you feel is your conscience, what you feel is right. Don't worry about the ramifications. We'll deal with that. The second thing I want to deal with is, there've been a lot of references to the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is a big picture item. That's where we want our county to be in the future, where we want things to go. But the implementation of the comprehensive plan is through ordinances, through zoning, through the art, the recreational ordinance, all the ordinances we deal with. If you're going to deny this application, you need to give a reason. I suggest you give that reason during the, um, discussion phase, and I suggest that you give a reason based on our ordinances, not on the comprehensive plan. Because the comprehensive plan is what I call the overriding conceptual idea, and you really need to talk about the details of why this plan, why this, um, application would fail. As I said, please use the ordinance as your reference point. And that's all the comments I have. I just want to give you that and everything, so.
I'd like to make a motion to include the connection to public. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see.
Okay.
Sorry, I did have the glass.
Were y'all still on the ordinance? Was that what you were talking about?
No, we on it. I mean, uh,
I don't want to beat a dead horse to the extent everybody's.
How could we?
I try not getting rebutted.
The public hearing.
I'm not the public hearing. I'm the applicant. I, I just asked Doc before, and I said, "Do I need to sign up to speak?" And he said, "I, I thought it was like you get to speak as the applicant when it comes up on the agenda."
Yes, sir. You go ahead.
Okay. I, I appreciate it. Listen, I don't, like, I don't want to talk.
Yeah, I thought you, cause you on this subject here.
I, I just wanted to say, like, I heard, I hear the passion in the room. Uh, I understand it. Uh, I do want to reiterate what the county attorney said, is the criteria that you have to apply. I looked after, we talked in the beginning about 24-252. The thing about 24-252 is it's when you pull building permits. We're not pilled in building permits. We don't even have the thing designed yet. All we're wanting to do is go down and do that part, the traffic. That's DOT. All that in stormwater and environmental stuff, we hadn't even put that submission together yet. It doesn't come for the preliminary. It comes at the end with the final approval. It comes with the regulatory agency. So we're still, like, got the, the beginning and the end conflated together. But if you look, and I don't want to go over every one of the 11 factors, but there are 11 factors in 2479, which is the conditional use. Cause I want to remind you, this is zone commercial. We didn't do that. It could be a Dollar General. Like, all this talk about it preserving nature and, and all, in harmony with all that, that's under the other one, 24-252. There are 11 criteria under 2479, and if you see Doc's determination, he's found compliance in all those. And, and the one thing I'd like to say different than what the county attorney said is, we had a ton of litigation in Greenville where people, the planning commission was denying stuff, saying it doesn't com- it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan. It's not just you vote and then you state your reasons. If someone makes a motion to approve or deny, they have to say, "I approve or deny it based on these criteria. I find it doesn't comply here. I find this." I would encourage you to use Doc's determination as a guide for the criteria that are in what you're to consider. The other stuff about, like I said, traffic, runoff, none of that's on the table tonight. That's all final approval. So, like I said, I would encourage you to look and say, if you disagree with Doc that it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan, or that it doesn't comply with any of those conditions he stated, you gotta show your math. That's fair to us. And listen, I heard about democracy and taxation without representation and all that. You know, when they wrote the Constitution, the minorities they were talking about protecting were property owners. My guys bought this land. It's zone commercial, and all you hear about, like, it's got to be preserved. The timber on it is scrub oak. It's already been timbered. Maybe it's pond, I don't know. It's already been timbered out. So they're preserving this thing. It's not even going to have any more density than what's in the new ordinance. So I understand the passion against it, but if I, I wish I had a collection of all the colored t-shirts I've had. I'd, it'd be like an NFL retired player with all the jerseys on the wall. This happens all the time. But you also have a duty to protect the property interest of this per- of the people who own this property. It was for sale two years ago. Anybody could have bought it, and it could be a field forever. But anyway, like I said, I would just encourage you to stick to the rulebook, which is 2479 and the 11 conditions.
Thanks, sir.
Hey, does anybody else get to speak? I mean, got it.
No.
Right there's the signing sheet. You see?
I'd like to make a motion to include the connection to public sewer. Not yet?
So, so you have to actually make a motion on the item, and then if you want to place an amendment on an item, you need to make that motion during the motion on the item. So the first motion should be an emotion to approve, and then if you're going to put conditions, you'll make a motion during your discussion, and then you'll have your final vote after that.
Okay, make a motion.
Yeah. I'm making a motion.
Okay, this is this way then. That's what, we'll do it this way. Okay. We know that, uh, and we, we had our review of everything, everything in, uh, according to what I've already checked before we came. It meet all the compliance for kind of land development ordinance, and so I want.
So, I just, just for declaring, I would like to make a motion to approve, then go into discussion, and then y'all talk all you want to about it. And then if you want to make conditions, you make them during that con- you make them during that discussion period. And then, once you've done any votes on the conditions, then you'll move on and your, your final vote. And also, to be clear, any vote on a condition does not count as any sort of approval or denial of the original motion. So don't feel like that if you approve a condition, that you're automatically approving the final, because that's not how that works. Okay?
Yes, I have it all. Okay, so we're going to make a motion to.
To approve, right?
Yes. I just did.
Can you hear Doc? You hear?
Make a motion to approve.
That's a second.
Second it.
Discussion. Now, over the discussion.
Let's make sure, what is the motion?
Yeah, they want to make the motion. What the motion?
Okay, so we're going to make a motion to approve the, the glasses.
Preliminary.
Preliminary approval.
To the application for proposed RV park at Brim Oak.
Okay, Brim Oak, okay. Say it out there. Okay, now repeat that.
Okay, we're going to make a motion to approve the preliminary pla- application for.
I second it.
Okay, discussion. So, uh, now, uh, my take, I said, uh, I'll, uh, recommend approval, uh, because of, uh, after I checked all the ordinance and everything, they, uh, they meeting all the criteria of, uh, it's on and everything, in order for that, everything in compliance, in compliance, and also, uh, I believe, uh, I was looking here. In compliance, and, uh, I think they also, uh, we got the, uh, approval accepted, but they, I, I understand you're willing to, uh, accept a condition of sewer requirement. Am I correct? And, uh, so, uh, that's, that's my say, so I think we should go ahead and approve it. So, you know, you got your condition.
I was going to make a motion since to, uh, include the connection to public sewer as a condition upon approval, so.
So there is a motion to.
Amendment motion.
Yes.
Has a contingency that it be approved if there is hooked up to this.
Yes, upon approval.
System.
Right.
Okay. So that's a contingency. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, okay.
Now, discuss that issue.
Get a discussion on that, issue of the sewer, that they connect to public sewer. Does that understand right? Condition they connect to. Y'all understand what?
Yeah, we're just adding a condition.
Adding a condition.
That they connect to public sewer.
Condition for approval.
As a condition for approval. That's what we're voting on.
Okay, all in favor would say it, amend motion, and more discussion. All that said, the amendment motion that the condition is, uh, they are willing to accept their condition is sewer requirement to connect to the public sewer. All in favor would say motion, raise your right hand, poses, I have it. So with that, then we would, to the original vote to approve.
Are there any other amendments?
And more amendments. And more discussion, you know?
A discussion for the final vote?
You need a discussion before a final vote, I think, just.
I was just, I'm not sure to direct this question to. Am I allowed to abstain from voting since I was just sworn in last month, and I wasn't here?
You can abstain, yes.
Okay.
And more discussion.
Yeah, I, I have a, I prepared a statement for discussion. I'd like to read.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm going to start with the 30,000-foot view first, and I'll, I'll bring it down to the relevant ordinance. Um, we all want to protect our inalienable rights to our property, specifically our real estate properties. Unfortunately, none of us have absolute property rights. We all pay property taxes under the duress of being, of it being sold out from under us by the county. In addition, we are all under the restrictions of federal, state, county, and city governments. Whether these laws and regulations are constitutional, that's another debate for another time. Um, our nation's Declaration of Independence states the purpose of government in the preamble, that we are all created equal, we're endowed by our Creator with the rights of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, which includes property, and that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among man, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, which are the citizens. I'd like to repeat that final section, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among man, deriving their just powers from the citizens. There are five main bundles of rights that are recognized in real estate. One is the right of possession, to occupy and hold the property. The right of control, to use the property as desired, with legal boundaries set by local ordinances. The right of enjoyment, which is to use the property without interference from others. The right of exclusion, to keep others from entering or using the property with some legal exceptions. The right of disposition, to sell, lease, gift, or transfer the property rights to another person. Because of our human nature, we're bent towards looking out for our own best interests, controlling our property, but not necessarily our neighbors' rights of enjoyment without interference from others. And this is why we have to have laws and ordinances to find the proper and good balance between neighboring property owners' rights. This is the tension that we have before us on the proposed RV park in the Horse Creek neighborhoods. The right of a developer to control his property, and the right of the neighbors to enjoy their properties without interference from others. The surrounding property owners have brought before us numerous risks of interference and endangerment to their properties if this RV park is added to their neighborhood. They're at risk of their wells being contaminated, their wetlands being contaminated, and the loss of their dams and ponds from contaminated stormwater runoffs. They have intelligently, with research and sources, pointed out safety concerns for travelers in the area, including the RV customers' fire safety and suppression plans. Some of our ordinances are very simple and clear, such as not allowing a property owner to collect abandoned appliances and automobiles on their property due to the public health risks of neighboring properties and their owners. It only takes a pause in use of common sense to know that this is good law. It's claimed that only experts and engineers can correctly identify other dangers of one property owner's actions upon the surrounding properties. But any child that has played outside during rains knows that water flows downhill through the least resistant way, and can be a powerful force that will wash away the stick, mud, and grass dam one just built in their side yard. Anyone that has a driving license knows that not all drivers are safe nor obey traffic laws, and that there are blind curbs and hills that require more caution and protection of lives and property. In most situations, drivers can identify unsafe traffic areas and patterns just by driving through them, and sometimes witness accidents like the one on Tuesday that could have been prevented by better engineering. We can also learn from other communities that did not have concern over major changes to their natural topography, wetlands, and forests. We can see the destruction it brings to those communities where now flooding occurs where it used not to. Let us not make the same mistakes as our county grows. The neighbors have sent us emails indicating the laws and ordinances that are not met by the submitted development plan for the RV park at Brim Oak. Their legal representatives sent an exhaustive list of unmet legal requirements also. Um, I, I am not going to vote to approve this application. I, I want to vote to deny it, and I do, I'm going to bring this down to the ordinance, the specific RV park ordinance. Number one, the site is to be limited to 15 acres, but this parcel is 17.1 acres. Now, I've heard discussion that, hey, that's just bonus buffer, green space and buffer room, but our ordinance clearly states that it's limited to 15 acres, and those buffers and green spaces are limited to 15 acres. I have not seen anywhere where the developer is willing to parcel off the extra 2.1 acres. The site shall be developed in a manner that preserves natural features and landscape. There's no way to go in there and cut down the trees and grade it and make it level enough for those RV pads without disturbing the three springheads and the flowing stream on the property, which all flow downhill towards the neighborhood. There's no detail about the trash convenience centers. They're not identified of where they're going to be on the plan. Um, the maximum impervious ratio, um, is, our ordinance says shall not, shall not exceed 15% of the project site. I, I have done my math. I don't have it in front of me. I did it a couple of months ago. Um, I do know that there's 43,560 square feet in an acre, and so I did convert all units down to square foot to come up with that percentage, and I came up with a percent higher than 15%. Um, also, our ordinance reads maximum density shall not exceed seven vehicles per acre. We have a problem here. We failed to give a definition. Number one, the site is to be limited to 15 acres, but this parcel is 17.1 acres. Now, I've heard discussion that, hey, that's just bonus buffer, green space and buffer room. But our ordinance clearly states that it's limited to 15 acres and those buffers and green spaces are limited to 15 acres. I have not seen anywhere where the developer is willing to parcel off the extra 2.1 acres. The site shall be developed in a manner that preserves natural features and landscape. There's no way to go in there and cut down the trees and grade it and make it level enough for those RV pads without disturbing the three springheads and the flowing stream on the property, which all flow downhill towards the neighborhood. There's no detail about the trash convenience centers. They're not identified of where they're going to be on the plan. The maximum impervious ratio is, our ordinance says shall not exceed 15% of the project site. I have done my math. I don't have it in front of me. I did it a couple of months ago. I do know that there's 43,560 square feet in an acre. And so I did convert all units down to square foot to come up with that percentage. And I came up with a percent higher than 15%. Also, our ordinance reads maximum density shall not exceed seven vehicles per acre. We have a problem here. We failed to give a definition for vehicles in our ordinance. Therefore, we have to go by the state definition. And the state definition includes about anything that you have to get a license plate for. So there's no way that the developer can promise us that he'll never exceed the vehicle density on there because we don't have a proper definition. I know that our ordinance requires buffer yards, and again, I'll say again, that has to be included within the 15 acres. You cannot include the extra 2.1 acres for that. It allows roads gravelled or paved. And I know the plan is for a gravel road, but if you've ever lived on a gravel road, which I did for a while, that gravel gets impacted by the weight of the vehicles and it becomes an impervious area. So again, just on practical life, we know that that, those gravel roads, although they're not counted in the impervious area, they will become impervious with the weight of the vehicles. And so that increases the impervious area on there. And for those reasons, I'm going to vote to deny the application again.
In the most discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the preliminary plan approval for the old RV park at Brim Oak? All in favor of approving, raise your right hand? Poses? So you sustain it?
Yes.
Andrew's asking that quorum.
We got one sustaining.
You have three, two.
Three, three, and two, and one.
Stention. Stention. Well, I know it's not a vote. I know that.
Can I make a motion for us to reconsider?
Reconsider and enter on the minutes.
I'm sorry.
Motion to consider on enter on the minute, on the minutes.
Okay, what are you asking? To reconsider the vote that was just taken? Be somebody on the majority side that would have to reconsider.
Okay.
It's not a motion to reconsider. It's a motion to reconsider and enter on the minutes.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're reconsidering the vote?
May I ask?
No.
No, you can.
No, you're not part of it.
What are you asking? For the vote to be?
For the, I'm sorry, I'm doing, I'm asking in favor of a citizen and I'm not sure what he wants.
Okay. Basically, we have three, two, with one abstention. That would be, there's a quorum here, so my feeling is that that would be a majority of the three voted in favor of the motion, so the motion passes.
That's my understanding too, because sustaining is, you know, you're not voting.
Right.
And you got a no. We got two no's and three, three.
That's basically three, two.
So that'd be, that's our majority. Isn't that right? If I know I'm rude, right?
That's it.
You got that? We have three, three yes, three yeses, two no's and a sustaining. So the motion approved.
Because to reconsider the vote, that would have to be one of the people in the majority. Basically, there's no motion from y'all. Matter is resolved.
All right, so you got.
Now, if you could write that motion to reconsider dinner on the minutes, that would delay it and give a chance for another person to the next.
You're asking for a revote?
Anybody in the room can't do that. It got to come from us.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, it has to be somebody on the winning side to be considering it.
Okay, okay.
We, we voted. And that's unanimous. And that's staying.
I mean, the vote's, the vote is the vote. You're ready to vote. Next item on the agenda.
Okay. You got, you got three quarters, right? We don't have any new business. We have an exact session. Don't have any comments. Give me a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, all in favor of adjourn, right hand. Neither adjourned. Thank you.